The zoo, they've gone to Georgian, various activities. So really going to places that have been very unique and perhaps for some, a lifetime experience. So that's been very helpful. We've collaborated with the YMCA that provides free lunches to our campers and that's very much appreciated. There are several programs that are very, that were well attended. One of which is the community garden program in North Chat, an archery program, as well as a dancing art class at Eastdale and Shepherd. And of course, there's been an extreme collaboration with Parks and Outdoors with kickball, volleyball, and pickleball. But when we talk about programming in general, believing or not, our program, our community centers have facilitated over 165 active programs across the enterprise. And of course, they fall into multiple categories from wellness to fitness to sports, et cetera. So youth development and aquatics because of the pools. And you know, there's a number that kind of just jumps out at me. When we look at the full year of activity in our community centers, we have over 256,000 community engagements. And that includes walk-ins as well as program participation.
All right. So the question I have about the data is lots of times when people show data, they show everybody that touches the place. Are these people that touch the place?
Yes.
And then how many of them come back a second time?
Well, a lot of them are repeat. A lot, oh absolutely.
So are they counted in the data?
As total, yes ma'am.
So if I go back twice, that's two encounters?
Yes, and multiple days, absolutely.
All right. So do you have any idea how many people, no matter how many times I come, the people are served by the centers?
Unique, unique.
Yeah, yeah.
Meaning not in, not in the program, but the actual walk-ins?
In all fairness to you, what council has been looking at for a long time is impact. So, so to say we serve how many of those people, it, what you said doesn't really tell the story. It, because if you count me every time I walk in, it could be 365 times. What I want to know is how many people, unique, unique experiences? How many unique people are you serving?
Right, and I don't have, I do not, I do not have that.
Okay, that would be really interesting because we see a lot of things that sound terrific. Like when you talk about 100 and something programs. I'm very familiar with the areas, the ones in my area.
Yes.
And, and I'm not sure how that plays out. Are they unique programs?
165 unique.
Unique programs and how do they divide out among the community centers?
Well, the various centers, we, we track them by center and I can just give you a list of.
So you could say Shepherd has 20 unique programs?
Absolutely.
That happen one time or happen regularly?
On a regular basis.
Okay.
I can provide that information.
So I would really like to know that. I'd like to know how many people, unique people they, the center serves, okay? And I, not just somebody walks in for a picnic and then leaves. That's not what I'm talking about. And then the other one as well, how many programs you have.
Per center.
Per center because they don't, there seems to be a lack of equity and I'm trying to get a handle around across.
Well, we are, we are certainly working.
It's, it's not a criticism. I'm just trying to get hold of, of, of what's going on because you can make data show anything.
Sure.
And I think our community centers are probably one of the most important assets we have. And I want to make sure they're really serving the community. It's not a loaded question at all. In fact, as Ryan knows, I think they should go even further and be attending to safety of kids. I'd like a couple of them to be open 24/7 because our kids need it. I'm not, this is not new information. I've, I've told Ryan this. So I want to get an idea because our kids come first. I think they need to have safety. And I think if it's a community center, it needs to be a community center. So that's where I'm coming from, no hidden agendas.
Sure.
Thank you.
So when we look at programming, we started off in the month of January, giving our community centers a baseline of programming, three programs a day throughout the enterprise. And we're moving toward five programs a day on a weekly average. And we feel like by doing that, we can increase our community engagements by 35%. Now, I have to drill down to understand and to push out those numbers to, to give you what you want in terms of being unique visits and maybe once, one-time visits for individuals who are coming through the door.
I've been to Washington Hill Center, to Brainerd Center. You guys do an excellent job with the camps this summer. But my question is the same question that I guess a lot of folks are wondering. What are we doing as far as beefing up activities for the seniors?
Right, so we are extending senior programming through all of our community centers. We think that's very important that we're able to serve all of our audiences in all of our centers. And so with the exception of looking at just a senior centerpiece, we think having senior programming in all the centers as well as youth programming is what we should do, what we should have on all the agendas.
What is the senior program looking like? So it is, can you give me an example of what you have in, in place for seniors?
Sure, I, I do have a list. It varies what we, when we offer senior programming. You have fitness, you have fitness classes, there's Zuma classes, there is aquatic classes with Parks and Outdoors in the pool. There are sewing and knitting classes. There is technology classes. So it goes on and on.
Okay, and this is a regular?
Yes.
This is on every week?
Every week, in different centers.
So have you reached out to the seniors to see what else they would like to have available for them?
We're talking to seniors. We've been talking to our, our senior center board. In fact, this, this particular Friday will be the fourth time in as many weeks. And they of course have provided us with a wish list of the things they would like to see. And so we are fully engaged with them. To understand exactly what they want and, and they've been very vocal in letting us know.
Okay, so on their wish list, is it anything different than what you just had given to me just a second ago?
Yeah, it is, it is an extensive wish list. I have not compared the two.
Okay.
They're.
But, but what you just gave me is standard?
Oh yes, that's, that's going on in multiple places.
But every community center has different programs.
Absolutely, absolutely. And some community centers are really knocking it out of the park and others we're, we're helping to get to that level of consistency across the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Mr. Dunn, have we started up the community advisory committees and gotten their input about what, you know, what the community would like to see happening at the community center? Because each neighborhood is different.
That's correct.
So I would like to see what's been their concerns or what have been their ideas that have been implemented outside of pickleball because everybody don't have, pickleball is not a location for every center.
Yes.
Or, or everybody is not enthused. They may work for District Two, but in District Nine, it may be something else.
So the, the community advisory committees are ramping up at different levels. There are one in Hickson that are, that's really doing an amazing job. They're working on a program for English as a second language. And they're, they're thinking about pushing out in the Hickson Community Center. There are all sorts of interesting ideas, one of which was programming for the hard of hearing that they're, they're flushing out. These are not in place yet, but these are various ideas that are coming out of the CACs. So you know, we are helping the CACs come up with ideas and certainly looking forward to support them in, in the centers when they come up with these ideas. But a lot of them are still fresh and they're working through, getting through regular meetings at this point and meeting on a regular schedule.
Right, because they had, you know, our rec centers has been a hot topic.
Yes.
An ongoing topic because it could be utilized in so many ways and they haven't for so long. And they're the first point of contact when it comes to our youth.
Yes.
But we so often keep saying, this is what they need to be doing. And the kids now, the youth now, they're doing something different.
Yes.
They're not into ice skating, they're not into all this other stuff, what we used to do back in the day. So I would be appreciative if we just get their input and say, what exactly do you want to do? Because me telling you, I'm gonna take you bowling, they may not be in the bowling. They're in the technology and things like that, gaming system. So I think that's pretty much what I would like to see and how we communicating the information for the stuff that's happening. So I went to Carver Center, I pop up at the centers at different times unannounced, on purpose. But I went to Carver Center and had no idea that they were even engaged in what they were doing. And I was like, oh my God, why nobody know about this? I'm gonna go live so people can see what's going on at Carver Center and maybe they can get their kids or whoever to come. But it wasn't just kids, it was adults that was involved too.
Sure.
That's important on how we getting, because if the community don't know about it, it's easy for us to say, there's nothing happening at Carver Center. There's nothing happening at Eastdale. There's nothing happening here. I hear about pickleball all day long, even on the radio station.
Right.
I'm not a pickleball player, but it's still exciting to hear, oh man, they got so much stuff going on at their center.
Yes.
And it could actually be the only thing they have going on. But the messaging that's out appears to be that it's something consistently happening at this center.
So we're working very closely with community health. And we have nurse navigators in multiple centers throughout our enterprise. The nurse navigators are there pushing wellness programs. Two weeks ago, they did sports physical at Carver Community Center. And of course, even in our department, the Office of Family Empowerment, we have our representatives providing crisis management at several of our community centers and on a regular basis. So certainly we're a lot more than sports and we continue to focus on the total needs of, of our community as we understand it.
And then I only have one other thing, two other things that I was gonna say. Now, I know Glenwood is in my district, but they have a great senior program. It's all kind of stuff going on, line dancing, courts, fitness, whatever habit, you can find it. Outside pulling out a tip book and I'm being funny when I say that, but they know. They know how to engage with what the seniors enjoy doing, you know what I mean? So we cater to them. My only concern and I've voiced this since I've been on council in 2017 is the appearance of what, the way our recreation centers look. And particularly our, the lower income communities, they look like jail cells. They're not pleasing to the eye for you to want to answer. We can wax the floor, but if the walls are dirty, like we don't even have anybody that's cleaning the walls or even repainting the walls or investing the time in it. They even plant flowers on the outside to make the landscape look beautiful. When you come to our centers, they look a hot mess. Even the ones that's been newly built in our communities, they're slowly declining because the upkeep just isn't happening in those communities. And when you think about the land that we have our recreation centers on, it's so much that you can do on that land. We can tell the historical story about how it was a golf course located right at Carver Center. How we could fix those walking trails up so people can enjoy a walk in their community, a safe walk, even in Eastdale and everywhere else. But we pushed the narrative so much about, let's come downtown, let's utilize these hiking trails. When we got our own hiking trails in our community. But if they don't feel inviting and when you come in the inside and the customer service is not great and the people aren't looking like they want to be at work or you can't tell who's the employee from a regular citizen, that's an issue. We should be able to walk in the inner center and say, oh, there's the staff member, Ms. Jenny. She got on the shirt that's representing that she worked at, a name tag to identify her by her name.
Yes.
All kind of stuff, a smile, I'm glad you're at our center.
Right.
Those kind of things, not, I'm walking in and they like, oh, here they go again. What they doing in here is shirt all stained up because you just ate lunch. That's the kind of stuff that's unacceptable. And we, we have to do a better job as employees representing the city and dealing with our youth because people, they're looking at you. And the impact that you're making on that child life, you come to work sagging, I'm coming sagging. You can't tell me that I need to have on a belt. They're not listening to you because they're seeing what you're doing.
Yes.
But that's all I have.
Well, we are focused on customer service training. We went through training with all staff in February and we're doing a phase two training in October. And we've also established some service standards. So we're, our guidelines for how we want to, want our staff to engage with our clients. And one of these cards, please take one, that's, those are our standards that we've developed and adopted in community development. And. Thank you. You're very welcome.
Thank you. I think Councilwoman Coonrod's points are, are well put. And I think there's some that, that many of us on the council share concerns about overall quality of service. And I've talked with Ryan and, and Tony, your predecessor, at length to try to understand what seems like a simple problem is actually a complex one. And I recognize it's gonna take a while to get that battleship turned around. I, I thought that your point, Councilwoman Coonrod, about people not knowing what was happening in the centers was spot on. And our North Chattanooga Advisory is, is kind of fledgling. I think they've had one gathering. And I'm setting aside some ARP money for the center. And I said, I see things that immediately I'd like to see improved on the Francis Wyatt Center, but, but I want them to, to tell us what, what they need. And one of the, and the communication's been really challenging because nobody's going on the city website to go find the calendar, you know? And one of the things they brought up is one of those announcement signs, which to me was a, a really simple and very smart idea that it's not, not necessarily easy to roll that out across all centers, but because we have a designated grant allocation, you know, that we might be able to do that. And, and I know that that center staff is really trying hard to engage with the community and it's a new world out there. Like you said, people are not behaving in the way that they did 20 years ago. And if we try to reach people the way we did 20 years ago, we will quickly find that our engagement will not improve. And I do think that the work that Neighborhood Services is doing with trying to get our, our neighborhood associations up, that that could be a terrific way for our community centers to engage with those neighborhood associations and get the word out that way. And then your point also about the facilities, I see where, you know, Scott has said to us, Scott Martin in Parks has said, we have not allocated funding, Ryan, for park maintenance. And I think what Councilwoman Coonrod's pointing out about the main, I mean, the two centers that are in my vicinity, only one of which is in my district are derelict. And I remember as a, as a, a young mom dropping off, picking up my children at the bus stop, they didn't want to go in there, you know? It was scary and dark and asbestos ridden. So it's an untapped opportunity that I think if we can get community centers linked up with our Neighborhood Services and our Parks Department and then this, this service standards, we're, we're headed in the right direction.
Very quickly, the advisory committees, I met with my advisory committee to find out how they were going, the group in, in our area. And they said the first meeting, whoever came and spoke with them, talked with them about coming up with all these great ideas and then how they were gonna fund them. And I believe, what's the policy about that? In other words, if they come up with all, they want to have a pancake breakfast, then they have to raise the money and they have to do all of that? Because that's the message they were given. That's, that's not okay. And, all right, so if they come, and they were pretty frustrated. The other thing was the youth at risk. If you get people to really buy into something, then you've got to be there to shake their hand as partners. It shouldn't just be a neato one Chattanooga thing that has no substance. And I think that if you bring citizens in and they want to come in and they want to have a volleyball setup, then you don't ask them how they're gonna raise money to buy the net. And apparently that's the message that's been going out and, and that's not okay. The other thing is our youth at risk. We have, and you, you spoke to it. You spoke to all the departments working together and, yeah, but they don't seem to play well together. And I'm wondering what we're doing to address that? Because we have some real problems in Chattanooga that everyone knows. Our, we're, we're losing our kids and I, and the youth centers seem to be the way to, or the community centers need to be the way to bring grandparents, kids, everybody together. And, and we're gonna have to put our money where our mouth is. I'm very familiar with the budget. And I know that we can stretch a little bit places if it means addressing our kids. I, I think, I think that's very important. And the other thing is I don't think it takes forever to turn around a ship. I know I come from the private sector, but if you're, if you're really committed to something, you can turn it around pretty fast. You can get everybody in the room. You don't have to meet ad nauseam about it. What you need to do is sit and make decisions and just do it. And I think it's, it's of the essence, particularly with our kids. I know I keep delivering this message, but I think that with our community centers, we have the ability to help all kinds of families all over the city. And families in crisis are not just in the quote, inner city. I think that's condescending. I think for a kid to think that they're living in a problem area as opposed to saying, hey, this is an area where we can really help you succeed is very important and those kind of kids are all over. So I could go on, but I know we have other things to do. But I've got a lot of energy about this and I'd really like to see some action. Thank you.
Let me just go ahead, let him finish up his presentation and we'll come back.
Councilwoman Burz, I, I like those points you just made. But I just want to add to the conversation about art. Like we could do tag art, graffiti in a positive way. Like they can go in those rec centers on those walls and just make it look like how they wanted to look, beautiful. But what's important to me, and I'm sure is important to the council too, is that we talk about it all the time, diversity and inclusion. Our community center staff need to reflect the community. Now, years ago, I could say Eastdale was a predominantly African-American community. It's not that way anymore. And our rec center should be able to, should be a place where everybody feel like is a place for them. So the white kids in my neighborhood, they don't go to the Eastdale Center because they don't feel welcome. The Hispanics in the community don't go to the center because they don't feel welcome. But the black kids, it's a welcoming space for them. But we gotta, and I'm not sure how all the other centers operate, but we gotta create a safe space for everybody, no matter what color your skin is. And the staff should reflect that. It shouldn't, I shouldn't just have a all-black staff in my center and Jenny shouldn't have all-white staff at her center at Francis B. White because that's not how the world is now. And if we're gonna continue to keep people separated and operating in that, their minds are gonna continue to treat people in that way. And I know you all have said, well, you know, we have a hard time trying to find people to work. But if you hire them and you place them there, I guess a guy at Avondale loved to be at Avondale. Every time we see him, he interacting with those kids, the families love him. He's the only white male that's in that, in that rec center. And it took a while to get him placed there. But he loved it. When Christina, she's no longer working with us, she loved it out at Southside. I tried to recruit her at Eastdale, but we gotta mix the staff up because that's, that's important. We can't complain and the black people can't complain about white areas solely being white. Oh, there's no diversity here, there's no black people here if we're not doing the same thing. Now, we need white people to be working in our center soon because it just, our kids need to learn how to interact with everybody.
All right, Don, did you have anything else?
No.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Ryan, you got our copy today, babe?
I'll take it.
I thought I heard you summon me. Yes, I was like, where is this gonna turn? All right, and it's our presentation, the stadium design update. Jim has come to wow us today.
The bar is high.
Yes, yes it is. Eighty million dollars high.
I'm, I'm really, really honored to get a chance to update everyone. Thank you for, for taking a few minutes to talk to me. So what we have been up to for the last few months, working hard behind the scenes, I am thrilled to, to get a chance to present to y'all today. What you're seeing is very, very much a work in progress. Once the sports authorities selected the architecture team, they have been incredibly hard at work, basically trying to compress three or four months of work into about a month, just so that we can stay on track. And, and fortunately, we're in a great position to be on track to still deliver the stadium for opening day in 2025. Also recently selected was our construction manager. And, and so once the, the design reaches the, the complete schematic design package, which we expect will happen in the next couple of weeks, the EMJ, the construction management team will be pricing that package during the month of August. So we'll have more to come as, as we, in the coming months. But, but I did want to just start by kind of walking you through what, what we've been up to and answering any questions that you have. So one big milestone for the entire 120-acre site is that yesterday, we actually submitted our, our first zoning proposal to the city. So we've been working behind the scenes with the city and with RPA to work within the Form, Form-based code update to create an entire zoning overlay district for, for the entire 120-acre site. Not to read closely, obviously, but, but that was submitted yesterday and we'll be working with the city and, and the RPA in the coming weeks and months to, to effectuate this. But, but we're excited that that was a huge technical milestone that, that we've been all working very, very hard to complete. The, so the, the, the first thing as it relates to the zoning in the site is, is we've been working on creating a plan for infrastructure. Obviously, when you're, when you build a, a public venue like a stadium, you, you obviously start with thinking about traffic, thinking about access and parking and, and not just day one. But as time goes on and this, and this private sector development increases, how, how parking, access, and how you sort of weave it seamlessly into the community. And, and one of the things that, that we are, I, I personally am most excited about is that we feel like we've really taken advantage of the Riverwalk and this incredible public investment that the city and county have made. And, and I mentioned from the outset when I, when I last met with you that our, our goal was to expand the Riverwalk in a really dramatic way and, and actually integrate it into the stadium concourse itself. And so really what the front door will become is actually the Riverwalk itself. So, so that's, that's a, that's a, a pretty neat thing that we've been able to work out. Also integrating the old historic structures has been another key, essential aspect to it. And, and so as, as you can see here, and I might stand up and point if that's all right.
Jim, I'll drive on the.
Okay, sure, sure, sure. So, so you can see, this is the old iconic foundry building, what we call the pattern shop here. And then, and then the powerhouse here. This is, this of course is sort of the, both the current but also the expanded Riverwalk that, that runs under the, the exit on 24. And so the idea is to actually turn these elements, these historic structures into, into places for people to congregate, seating, able to view the stadium during game days, but also accessible year-round. So also I would, I would point out here how the Riverwalk, when non, during non-game times, the Riverwalk becomes, you know, open to the concourse. And so this all becomes like a public element, walkable, public, you know, bikeable, all those kind of things. And that, so that's gonna be a really fun thing. And also I'll hold you, I'll hold your suspense for a second, but we've also started working hard on the first portion of private sector investment as well. And we can come back to any of these, but if you want to keep going here. I'm glad you did that too, I did that first time.
I'm a pretty smart guy.
I know, me too. So, so this is a view of, of the entrance from, if you're essentially standing on the Riverwalk, looking, uh, towards the river, or to, or west essentially, how we would kind of integrate this kind of fun adventure of kind of weaving through these old historic structures. These are all original here. It's hard to imagine that becoming this, uh, but that's, that's, that's what we're up to. And then, the same building, looking from the field, you can see what an incredible intervention that is and really honoring the history and of the structure, basically structurally stabilizing it and then using it, uh, as, as a, as a venue for, for stadium, for the stadium. This is a project.
Oop, going back, sorry.
This is a. S nine, who's, who's one of the design architects on the team, worked on a really incredible project in Brooklyn called Empire Stores. It's been a AIA award-winning project globally. And a lot of the elements that they introduced to an old brick structure in Brooklyn here, were, this is kind of a lot of the inspiration that we're using for how to integrate these ideas into, into the powerhouse. And then this would be the view actually from the powerhouse, looking, uh, towards home plate.
Which way is the sun?
In, in the, in the correct direction. So, so the, 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 the rule, essentially, the major league rule is that north should, should basically, on a compass, north is the third baseline. And it can be four degrees east or west of the third baseline.
So, for me sitting in the stands, what does that mean?
So, what that means is, is that, is that west, the sun, the sun sets on the west. Obviously, instead of in the batter's eye, it, it sunsets behind the state. So, that's the, that's the sort of accepted major league principle for, for how stadiums are designed. The other thing I would point out here, so this is a historic structure, what we call the pattern shop. And then physically separated from that to kind of tell the, the story between new and old is along the third baseline, this is where a new, new construction would be, which also provides really amazing signage opportunities along I twenty-four, which will show you that perspective as well. A little bit closer up view of, of this corner as you sort of walk in from the Riverwalk. You can see the powerhouse here, the pattern shop. This would be that corner of how we'd actually like work inside the armature of the historic structure. So, there'll be food, kiosks, and venues, restrooms and stuff integrated into that structure. And then club, community seating up in the upper four. Kind of again, progressing down the concourse. And then this would be basically from left field, looking back. And you can kind of see it's purposefully, uh, different architecture than the historic structure, but still contextual and, and will fit seamlessly into the, into the stadium itself. Lots of different seating types, uh, that we've learned over the years to integrate. So, this is like, imagine like picnic table seating here. And then they'll, like, in the powerhouse, there'll be like date night seating, where you can actually sit, like, reserve a place, like, going to a restaurant, full menu, that, that kind of fun atmosphere. Good zone back here in the corner.
So, Jim, not to belabor the point, um, but I would love to know at what time in July, all these seats are in the shade, based on the height of the buildings? Because I think that's something really important to consider when it is ninety-eight degrees before the heat index.
Sure.
As to how our community will be able to enjoy, in their business suits, that beer on that picnic table right there.
So, so what, what, what I would offer, because it's, it's obviously a similarly important question.
Yeah.
As part of the early design process, we conduct actually sun studies. We have a solar program.
Okay.
And we, uh, that's not included in this.
Okay.
Package, but I'm happy to.
But in the future, you'd be able to get it.
I'm happy to, yeah, I can get it to you.
It's really important, I think, for all of us to be able to enjoy it as we think about sustainability.
Absolutely.
Making it a place that we want to be able to be outside is important.
The, the, wha- what I would say is like that, you know, it, it, so it is basically, it, it is a hard and fast rule in, in designing a new stadium that meets major league standards. The, again, the, the, the third base line essentially points north, plus or minus a few degrees, which this obviously does.
Right. But the height of the building tells us when.
Which will block the sun. That's right, that's right. And so, I'm happy to get you that.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim, with the powerhouse, the pattern shop, the club, different seating, what's the capacity?
Uh, the, so the stadium, the fixed seats, uh, will be somewhere between five and six thousand. But at capacity, in, in a modernly, modern stadium like this, you know, a lot of people come just, just to be there, not necessarily actually witness baseball. And so, it'll hold close to ten thousand people.
So, the amphitheater will hold ten thousand people?
For, for concerts, we can actually have the ability to, to increase that a bit.
Okay. Great.
Yeah. So, then this is the view from twenty-four. It's kind of, you can see, it's kind of a, not a technical rendering, but the point here is that eventually, you know, naming rights, and this provides a really dramatic opportunity for a welcome sign, if you will, from this entrance, uh, into Chattanooga. And so, we'll be, uh, coming up with more ideas for how to treat this facade as a, as a major opportunity for, for the entire city to kind of announce that it's welcome.
Councilwoman Coon, right? Yes, Jim, ooh, I almost look better than Truist Stadium. I almost got it. But you'll pull it off, I promise you, if you get somehow convinced Akuna Junior to be the first pitch when you open it up. You got me front, center, and the sun. In the sun.
Yes. Yes, Councilwoman.
Jim, so my question is the seating. How elderly-friendly, how?
Jermaine, could you, could you go back?
Knee-challenging.
Yes, ma'am.
Back-challenging. Bottom-challenging, is it?
Laptop is like riddles.
So.
That, that you have all these fine season individuals that would love to be there.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we're not crunched, and, you know, we need space, we need spacing for different reasons.
Sure.
You don't want to be.
So, fortunately, you know, the ADA is very prescriptive about, about how this works. But what we try to do is take it beyond that. And, and so, every different seating option in the stadium has their own considerations. They, each one has a certain proportion that has to meet ADA accessible access, accessibility. But also, uh, for those people that aren't necessarily disabled, but just, you know, needing easy places to, to get around, we've, we've accommodated that, uh, through access. You know, you'll be able to come in to different places underground. Like even, even a simple move like, you know, if you think about like an old, you know, Fenway Park, you know, a hundred-year-old stadium, they have that kind of brick backstop, you know? One of the things that we've learned is you can actually like, there's no rule for that. You can get rid of it, which improves the views. Because a lot of times, those, those particular seats are right up front. So, they're easy to get to, makes it easy to see. And then if you, if you go back one again, you can see, in addition to stairs, there are also these kind of, you know, elevators and things that make it easy. So, so literally every inch of the ballpark is, is easy to get around. And, uh, and that's obviously something we spend a tremendous amount of time thinking about.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question, it's important.
Question, I got more of a stadium, I'm really excited about it. I like the way that it looks, what it'll bring to our city. Cause I don't know who I remember Engel Stadium, how that looked. And you go, if anybody love baseball like I do, I mean, like, looking at how that was to, going at the lookout stadium now, so what it's gonna be now. Like, I'm just really excited about it to see how we're progressing in our city and, uh, all the things that's gonna be around it. You know, the food, the everything, the restaurants, all kind of stuff, the ability to come just enjoy it. But did you all, were you all able to capture the, uh, tag art inside the building? Or did you, you all gonna pay?
No, 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 we're, so, uh, where, where it's, where it's artful and appropriate and, and PG-rated, we're, we're gonna save as much of that as we can.
That's cool, okay, cool.
Just, just 'cause I think it adds an important layer of texture, yeah. It's funny, funny, Andy and Gary are wa- are literally walking the buildings every day and trying to keep, because, because it's like, sometimes the best stuff gets covered up. And, and so, we have to be careful. But one of the things I've learned over the years, I, it actually harkens back to your conversation, the previous agenda item, like, we'll actually create areas where we actually welcome that, you know? In the new park and then work with community centers. Uh, you know, I, I have a meeting to talk about all this kind of opportunities with Dr. Ware, on Friday, actually, a meeting with her. And, um, so we'll, 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 we'll create fun, you know, appropriate opportunities for that kind of thing.
That's a good deal, I may have to crank up my spray can or two.
Please, please. I'll join you. And then, and then again, not, not much to talk about here, other than to say that, you know, obviously, in addition to, you know, for people who love baseball, but also people who don't love baseball, this is really a community asset that we're building to be a year-round vehicle for community engagement and development. And we are laying the groundwork right now for literally hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of private sector investment, uh, to take place around the stadium. And so, this is a picture of an office building that we're working on, uh, adjacent. And then the next slide is also residential, um, here, which would be kind of flanking left field. And this is about just over three hundred units as, as designed. We're very early in the process, but, but the great thing is we're, we're able to work concurrently on private sector investment as we are the stadium. Actually, uh, across the street at Warehouse Row, I also have another architect who's flown in from Seattle, because I'm gonna be working on yet another, uh, project on the site with him. And, uh, so anyway, I think the, the great news is that I'm here to say that the chicken and the egg are coming at the same time. Which I think is really important.
Jim, I had a couple of questions. First, when are y'all planning to break ground on this, on this project?
Uh, that's one of the things that our construction managers are actually gonna be working on during the month of August. There's a chance that, uh, working with the sports authority, we're able to actually accelerate the earthwork component. Um, there's obviously a lot, we're, we're, we're basically lowering the field about twenty feet so that the concourse can stay level with the Riverwalk. You can imagine, that's, it's just a lot of time to, to take that earth out. And so, we're trying to see if we can accelerate that, uh, to make sure that we hit that, that April, twenty twenty-five date.
And then, the site, does the site have to be remediated? And if so, what's the process, what's the status of that?
So, so fortunately, the site, and this is one of the things we've been working on, numerous discussions, uh, with, with the property owners and, and with TDEC and, and the city's brownfield coordinator. The site is in the, in the TDEC program. The great thing about remediating the site is by taking all the earth away to put the field twenty feet below the surface, where essentially the, the remediation takes place because of the, put, locating the, the field. So, it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
So, that doesn't impact, the remediation doesn't impact your potential groundbreaking?
No, 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 not at all, not at all.
And then finally, um, I know there was a community benefits agreement started. And so, could you give us an update on that process and what's going on there?
Sure, we've, we've, we've met numerous times with Caleb and the community, uh, to kind of prepare the way. And, and one week ago, we actually shared the first draft of that community benefits agreement with them. So, they're actually reviewing it now, and we expect to meet with them again in the next, it's really as soon as they're ready, in the next couple of weeks, to start working through. But we, that, that community, community benefits agreement, uh, was with the private sector development, with the current landowner, with the team and the operator, all coming together in one agreement to sort of put together a, a package of things that we'll hold ourselves accountable to, that are based on the feedback that we got from them. We, they did a massive amount of work to sort of put a lot of things together. And we tried to be as responsive as we could to, to meet as many of those goals. And it has to do with, you know, obviously, dependent on who, you know, they were asking things of the team, like creating employment programs and, and the development as it relates to like environmental remediations, you said. So, we've, we tried to cover as much of that as we can, uh, in that agreement. So, there'll, there'll be more to, more to share as we start working through that with them.
And are there, is, so will there be two agreements, one with the team and then one with the?
We actually tried to, to, to capture it. We, we've had conversations about this. We, it, it was important to the community that it all be sort of housed in one place. And so, we found a way to actually put it together. So, so essentially, we'll all be signing one document.
All right, that's it, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Council? I don't see any more questions. Thank you, Jim, so much for coming and your presentation and update. I think people like to hear about their eighty million dollar, uh, investment into this stadium. So, I really appreciate it. And Jermaine, thank you so much. Jermaine, you have any comments?
No, I just wanted to say we, uh, uh, enjoy working with the county on this process. Deputy Mayor Corey Garen is here, uh, representing the county. And the county's been good partners throughout this entire process.
All right, well, thank you so much. All right, thank you, Jim.
Thanks for your time.
All right. All right, Council, if you take a look at your agenda on the other business, pending legislative matters, we have a form-based code, uh, hearing on August the first. And I believe the land development office will be sending us an update or sheet about that. Uh, pending presentations, um, we have presentation from the firefighters about their summer camp that just happened, that's August the eighth, and then it connects update August the fifteenth. Council agendas, uh, today we do have a, a presentation from Chris Hopkins with the fire police pension. And if you would just take a look at the, over the agenda for today. Uh, we do have an update on the status of S T V R tax rates in Tennessee law and Councilwoman Hill and Councilwoman Burz, I believe that's, was that what you all asked for? Okay.
Is that this week or next week?
Uh, no, it's, uh, next week.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, other budget and finances to me.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. Uh, then if you take a look at your board appointments, there are several seats. Uh, so, you can get with Chris Anderson about your board appointments, or, uh, with Nicole. And other than that, any other comments or announcements regarding that, uh, Councilwoman Coon?
Thank you, uh, I had asked, uh, before we went on break, for the Fourth of July, if the, uh, proposal can be placed on a strategic plan and to talk about this.
Okay, you can go ahead if you wanna discuss it in any case. Or do you wanna just put it on strategic plan?
Yeah, we can put it back on the strategic plan, because I'm sure probably no one was prepared to discuss it, since it wasn't. Yeah.
Okay. All right. And so, you'll bring the information for the next one, that'll be August the first, I believe. Yeah, August first. So, we'll add that proposal on to the strategic planning. Uh, any other comments or announcements?
I wanna examine, um, the codes as it relates to how many cars you can put on the grass at someone's home. I know right now it's unlimited amount of cars you can have in the grass. So, I wanna examine that, maybe we can put that on the agenda.
For code enforcement, um, kind of update or information session.
So, if I can get the information from legal, and we examine that, then we'll put it up.
Okay, what, what, what's that? We could just do that August the first as well, along with Councilwoman Coon. Okay, any other comments or questions or anything else?
Yeah, I would like an update on the administrative hearing officer.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, right.
Yeah, because I know. That made me think of it, because we're kinda, you know, waiting till that person comes on and there's some not okay things happening.
Right, right, yeah.
I would really like, there's no reason that shouldn't be going.
Yes, I think they have, may have some up, great updates, so.
Yeah, I know what's going on, but it's going on very slowly. Yeah, I know what's going on, but it's going on very slowly.
Chairwoman Dotley, to that point, uh, for the twenty-fifth, could we add an update on the status of enforcement? Of to shutting down the unlicensed short-term vacation rentals, you know, that was a big part of.
Oh, right, yes.
How they, how it's been going, because, um, anecdotally, I'm getting emails from people that are saying, I've been complaining and nothing is happening. How is this going on? So it sort of goes hand in hand with administrative hearing officer, but even prior to that, what, what's happening? So maybe we could bundle that.
During the agenda session?
Yeah, that, that could be the, yeah, the twenty-fifth, the update on that, short-term vacation rental tax rates and TM law.
Okay.
And of where we are on enforcement and shutting down the illegal ones.
Okay, enforcement on short-term vacation rentals for next week during our three-thirty agenda session. And then we handle that under departmental reports, and I think that would be the land development office. I'm not sure who's, who handles the tax rates and.
Finance, I think. Yeah, Vicky had pulled that number together.
So, so that's Vicky, Vicky is doing that, and then Chris is kind of, uh, spearheading the, getting the administrative hearing officer. Who could hear them all at once, because they all kind of.
Okay, so we just here, do you want to hear everything under the budget and finance to me?
That's fine, just so, yeah.
All right, that's fine. Any other items we need to discuss? So we have July twenty-fifth, we'll have, we'll add that enforcement update. There, then on the first, we'll look at the code enforcement, Councilman Hester, as well as the proposal from Councilwoman Coonrod. For, that's for strategic planning. All right, is there anything else, Council?
Sounds good, yeah.
All right, meeting adjourned until three thirty.